I'd like to have the pledge while our city commissioners come and we'll get started.
Please apply, please.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Phillips, would you please honor us with the invocation?
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we love you and thank you that as your people you give us the privilege to meet in meetings like this to help give directions to our city. And Father, I pray for our mayor, pray for protection for him and his family, for wisdom, knowledge, and discernment as he leads, for our commissioners that you would protect them and give them the wisdom, knowledge, and discernment that's needed in leading in their different areas of the city. And Father, I pray that our city would be an example to the other states and even to the other cities, that people could see Brownsville as something very positive and see Brownsville as a place not only to be from, but a place to be at. So, Lord, we just thank you for the privilege of the day and may everything we do be pleasing in your sight this evening. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Pastor John Phillips from Central Christian Church, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the public comments, then we'll go to item 11. We have two public comments. Mr. Lima Guerrero or Guerra? Guerra?
Guerrero.
Guerrero, okay. Okay. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The reason why I'm here is because I want to be heard, okay? And my concern is about the elderly people that lives on all this area over here between Fronton and Sixth Street by the federal court. I have a small house on 240 West Madison, and I have always maintained the inside of the property as well as the outside, okay? I see a lot of people that walk with walkers, wheelchairs, a cane, or they're with their providers, they're on the street, the sidewalks are not good, and that's very dangerous. And my point is that I took a ride with my husband from Federal Building all the way to 511 underneath the overpass, and that was eight miles exactly. That is very good, either you walk, you can have your wheelchair, you can ride your bicycle, whatever you want to do. Then you go here from the Federal Building on Sixth Street all the way to Fronton. Nothing has been done to us over there, huh? It's a shame. They have gone over there, the city has gone over there to clean my site, but I have to call, and they're very good about it. Public Works is very, very good about it. Ten days and they're there. But I don't think that we should be eliminated. All these people, you know, they need to walk because of their health. Even myself, I go three times to the stadium and walk. And if we have that done, which has been eliminated, it would be nice that I don't have to go into the stadium three times a week. And I need to walk, the doctor has said for me to walk. So I would like for you all to take in consideration what I'm asking for, not only for me, but for the rest of the people that live in this area. My commissioner on that area is Mr. Camarillo, I already checked, and the one for the county is Mr. John Wood. So I would like to be heard, you know, and that some action will be taken on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Flores, please state your name. You're allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. My name is Dan Flores. I am the president and CEO of Flores Investment Inc., which owns and operates American Investigations and Security National. We've been in business approximately eighteen years and currently employ approximately two hundred security officers, making us the largest locally owned firm in South Texas. We have branch offices in Donna, Laredo, and Corpus Christi. I'm here tonight specifically to speak on one item. This involves the award of a security contract to a local vendor with only two votes on September 4th, 2007. After careful consideration and reviewing what happened, I come before you one last time to allow you to correct what was done wrong. The city charter mandates that four yes votes are necessary to pass any one item. That didn't happen that night. Furthermore, the discussion was never centered on truthfulness. However, here are the facts, and tonight, if you allow me, I'm prepared to show each one of you in the city of Brownsville the facts. The request from the city of Brownsville was for a proposal for a term contract. Never was it discussed that a low bid would receive the award. The proposal has a total of fifty-five pages in its entirety. Pages forty-one and forty and forty-one outlined that the city could accept one or more proposals. And I'm going to read to you from your own language that was provided me by the purchasing department, because this is really important for you folks to know this. Offerers may propose alternative either within one overall proposal or by submitting more than one proposal. Any alternative proposal shall include a bid price, reservation of rights. The city reserves the right to accept one or more proposals. So there was a question that night if I bid on one or all of it, but we were told from day one that we could bid on whatever we wanted as far as the departments were concerned. And this is the way it was outlined. This is one of the best proposals I've seen put together by your purchasing department. Now, when the proposals were narrowed down to three companies, we were all notified to make our best and final offer. We did this in a confidential manner, but we all knew that the original rates, but we all knew, we all knew the original rates that were submitted. I knew what my competitors had submitted already, because that's the way the process is set up. My firm decided at that point to adjust our numbers. We didn't know what the other firm did, but now we know that they couldn't afford to change their numbers. Mayor, Commissioners, we had the lowest number that night by six cents, and you elected to award it to another firm based on the information that was provided to you. However, at that point, that contract should have been awarded to my firm. Now, as of the last twenty-four hours, I have learned that some of you have voted. However, this type of action is not correct because, one, you weren't conveying the proper information, and, two, it was not done in this forum here, okay? I've checked this with your city secretary. I know that night you all had an extremely long night, because it lasted into the weed hours, ten, ten-thirty, and we were the last item on the agenda. I'm asking you, please, to not expose the city to any further liability. Do what's right and what is fair. I humbly ask that you approve, that you not approve the portion of the minutes tonight on the meeting of September 24th, 2007, specifically involving item 21, which is a term security contract. I ask you that you bring back that item for review and that you let me show the commission and the rest of the citizens of Brownsville the real facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flores, and we thank everybody who comes forward with their opinions or statements. Let's go to item, Proclamations, National Rehabilitation Week.
Jesse, come on up. Anybody else with you? Just one coming up. Mayor, can you add the proclamation?
The Commissioner, which you read the proclamation.
Commissioner Sisnetos wanted to read it. I believe Commissioner Sisnetos wants to read it.
Yeah, I'm... A proclamation of the city of Brownsville, Texas declaring September 16 through September 22nd, 2007 as National Rehabilitation Week in our city. Whereas, South Texas Rehabilitation Hospital is observing and celebrating national rehabilitation awareness beginning September 16th, 2007. And whereas, Brownsville recognizes and values the education, social, and humanitarian contribution of its many citizens with disabilities. And whereas, those citizens have found hope, spirit, and dignity through the services of rehabilitation medicine. And whereas, rehabilitative services throughout our nation help to restore people with disabilities to independent, productive, and fulfilling lives. And whereas, Brownsville is proud and honored to have South Texas Rehabilitation Hospital as part of our community. Now therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested by the charter said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby proclaim September 16th through September 22nd, 2007 as National Rehabilitation Awareness Week in our city, and further encourage all our citizens to renew their commitment to people with disabilities and to the efforts of rehabilitative medicine improving the quality of life done on this, the 18th day of September, 2007, signed by Mayor Pat Almada and his Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words.
I'm Jesse Eason Gonzalez, and I'm the CEO for South Texas Rehab, and I'm representing our entire staff and the over two thousand patients that we've served since we've opened. And I really want to thank you for acknowledging rehabilitation and what a difference we've made, not only for the citizens of Brownsville, but also for those in the county and those that we've brought in as far away from Houston, and we had a patient that we brought in from Florida, and it enabled them to get closer to their families as they went through the rehabilitation recovery process. So thank you for acknowledging that. We will be presenting this proclamation to our staff tomorrow and our patients during the luncheon, and we always welcome you to come by our facility and share in the miracles that we share in every day. Thank you.
Jesse, and if you please tell all the staff and all the members there at South Texas Rehab Hospital that thank you for all the hard work, and all I hear from the community and the family out in the community is what a great job you guys are doing. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The proclamation National Food Safety Month. Please read it, Commissioner.
A proclamation of the city commission of Brownsville, Texas.
Oh, wait, there's some people here to receive it from HEB.
AB.
Please state your name here so people know. You're here on behalf of HEB.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor, B Lopez, HEB store director.
Good evening, my name is Frank Gamas, I'm with Quality Assurance, HEB also.
Good to see you, Frank. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Josh Lomitos, I'm the city of Brownsville, Father Health Department, who is sponsoring the awareness of food safety in all the stores in Brownsville.
Great, great. So you have something to be very proud. Let the city secretary read it, and you can turn around and show it to the camera there. Congratulations.
A proclamation of the city commission of Brownsville, Texas declaring September 2007 as National Food Safety Month in our city. Whereas, in order to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community and its orderly development, the city of Brownsville will partner with the HEB Grocery Company in order to participate in showcasing its commitment to food safety, education, and training. And whereas, the city of Brownsville in partnership with the HEB Grocery Company Quality Assurance will promote food safety on September 19th, 2007 by providing educational materials to the community. And whereas, the theme for Food Safety Month is "Don't Compromise, Clean, and Sanitize", which focuses on the important procedures necessary for proper cleaning and sanitizing of food. And whereas, National Food Safety Month is aimed at heightening and building awareness of the restaurant and food service industry's commitment to the importance of food safety education and to encourage additional food safety training for all industry employees and customers on proper food safety procedures. Now therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby designate September 2007 as National Food Safety Month in our city and further urge all our citizens to participate in National Food Safety Month activities and to assist others in improving their food safety. Done on this, the 18th day of September, 2007, signed by Mayor Pat Almada Jr. and the rest of the city commission.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished Commissioners. It is with great pleasure, you know, that we partnership with your local city health department to promote food safety in our everyday work through their inspections and through their training. And we invite everybody to stop by tomorrow afternoon at our Brownsville HEB number five on Paredes and 802, where we will be out there promoting food safety for our community. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you all do in the community.
Thank you so much, and on behalf of all the partners that work for HEB, which is at least over a thousand Brownsville citizens, we thank you so much for all this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Now, item 11, Commissioner.
Item 11, consideration and action to approve the Sports Arena Properties Incorporated estimated budget and authorization to proceed with the study.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, as you can see, we're here just to request your approval of SAPI's estimated budget, which would then allow them, with your authorization, to proceed with their study.
Would approve, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Camarillo and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor? Aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to item three.
Item three, consent agenda items A through J.
Approve.
A motion by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Aye, except for item B on...
What's that?
I vote yes, except I abstain on that item involving American and Surveillance, the minutes.
We don't have you as abstained?
No, he, no, we didn't take it out, so...
Abstained on it.
Yep.
Okay. Just that one item.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to item four.
Item four, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2006-606-CU, amending the text of the city zoning ordinance by allowing a conditional use permit for the sale of on-premise alcohol for lots 6, 7, 8, and 9 of blocks 42, 43, and 44 of Los Ebonos Properties subdivision located at 715 North Expressway 7783, known as Days Inn Motel.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is property shaded in red here.
Yes.
This is a property shaded in red, this is the location of the Days Inn Motel. The expressway goes here, you have a San Fernando neighborhood behind it. In this particular case, it's a conditional use permit to have a bar inside the hotel. The applicant is here, presented to the planning zoning commission that he would like to have a corporate bar, a bar to serve the people that stay at the hotel. It's not a separate building, it's within the walls of the existing structure. The planning zoning commission voted to approve this permit with the condition that the gate in the alley be closed and a cedar fence be erected in the rear of the facility. There is some opposition to this, and I believe I saw Mr. Gomis in the audience, and he has emailed me, there's a letter in the file, he's against this project, and also the applicant is here.
Okay.
This is a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Would you like to speak against it?
I have, I have your legal letter.
That's fine, but would you like to say a few words? Okay, the letter, okay.
Yep.
Ben.
Thank you, madam.
It's my understanding, Ben, that they're fine with it being closed, correct? That was the whole issue?
Yes.
To allow that there be zero access?
Right, to the rear.
What, is it going to be closed all the time, Ben?
Yes, all the time.
Okay. And we got to make sure that that gets followed through.
That's a condition of them getting the permit.
Move to close. Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo and seconded by Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion to close public hearing.
Would approve. Second.
Move, motion by Commissioner Sisnetos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, Commissioner Camarillo, and seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Let's go to the next item.
Item five, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-032-S to allow a specific use for a duplex in a dwelling Z classification for block 173 out of Omito Grove located near Anqua Street and Calles Avenue.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the duplex site here shaded in red, this is the expressway here. In this particular case, this is a specific use, they did submit a plan of how their duplex will look with the amenities. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation to you, the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions, any opposition?
Would move to close.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Sisnetos, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Need to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sisnetos, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item six, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-039 to rezone from dwelling A to light commercial G classification, lot 5, block B, block B out of Hart Jardine Terrace subdivision located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Estero Drive.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the lot here shaded in red, Boca Chica, Owens Road right here. This is a proposed location for a used car lot. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you. Public, this is a public hearing.
I would move to close public hearing. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longoria and seconded by Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor of close public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-040 to rezone from dwelling G to general retail G classification, one acre out of lot 1, block 1, out of La Posada, South Section 4, located near Mil Paved and Palacio Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is Mil Paved here, La Posada as well, and this is Palacio Real Drive. This is a location of a proposed, well, it's a tar shop. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend this application to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody have any comments?
Second.
Closed by Commissioner Sisnetos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item eight.
Item eight, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-041 to rezone from dwelling G to professional offices G classification, 4.20 acres out of lot 1, block 1, out of La Posada, South Section 4, located near Mil Paved and Palacio Road.
Honorable Mayor, this property is right next to the little triangle that you rezoned. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have professional offices right on Mil Paved, this location here where it is shaded in red. The planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend this application to you for approval.
Same applicant, different project, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Would to close. Second.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Would approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sisnetos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item nine, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-043 to rezone from light commercial G to light industrial G classification, 8.74 acres out of block 132 of El Hardin subdivision located near Central Avenue and SM 802.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a property here shaded in red. These are existing warehouses, the applicant just wants to have the proper zoning on his property, and it's to light industrial G classification. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you. It's a public hearing.
Okay, no opposition?
No.
Okay.
Would close.
One at a time. Who's making the motion?
Would close. Second.
Move close by Commissioner Sisnetos and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor of close?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. This is an action item, motion.
Approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, who made the motion?
I did.
Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Ben.
Item 10, consideration and action on resolution number 2007-052 to support the Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Public Transportation Coordination Plan for Cameron, Hidalgo, and Willoughby Counties.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Norma Samora, I'm Director for Brownsville Urban System. BUS and the Brownsville NPO are active participants of the TechStop Far District Transit Advisory Panel, which has undertaken the development of a formal regional public transportation plan for Cameron County, Hidalgo, and Willoughby Counties. The TAB is a committee of individuals representing diverse public transportation needs. The members represent all of the NPO, small urban, and rural transit providers in the region. Our members include private bus operators, mental health and mental retardation, independent living, workforce, health, and human service agencies, and the Texas Department of Public Transportation. The Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Public Transportation Coordination Plan was the result of a study mandated by the Texas Transportation Commission. In addition, it became a requirement under the new federal legislation, Safe TLU, that a coordination plan be in place in order to receive job access funds, new freedom funds, and Section 5310 funds, all three of which BUS applies for. The KFH Group Inc. was hired through funding received by TechStop to conduct this study for our region. The goals of this plan are to enhance the quality of the customer's travel experience, experience the availability of service where needed, increase the cost effectiveness and efficiency of service delivery, establish and sustain communications and decision-making mechanisms among sponsors and stakeholders to guide plan implementation effectively, improve the image of transit across the region, and develop a transit traveler information system. It is important to note that this plan has identified barriers and constraints that are unique to the city of Brownsville. These barriers and constraints must be addressed to ensure the continuation and existence of public transportation in the city of Brownsville. A particular concern is in the 2010 census, Brownsville will probably be over the limit for federal operating assistance, leaving the system with a very significant funding shortfall that will require millions of dollars from local assistance. The plan addresses potential opportunities to attend to the barriers and constraints identified as well, as well as step, to take steps that will be, to take steps that will address the goals and objectives of the above stated plan. A copy of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Public Transportation Coordination Plan was emailed to each one of you on Monday, September the 10th, 2007, for your review. As well, a presentation of the plan was also presented on Wednesday, September the 12th, at the Brownsville NPO Committee, at the Brownsville NPO Policy Committee meeting, where you were all invited to attend. Staff is requesting and recommending that city commission's endorsement and support of the Lower Rio Grande Valley Regional Public Transportation Coordination Plan, as well as commitment to work cooperatively with other entities and agencies to help implement such said plan.
Norma, I realize this is going to require me or some legislation or something. I know the city has no lobbyists at this time, but you're welcome to use the PUB lobbyist. I hand carried your resolution or the...
The letter.
At the time when I went to Washington, but if it's something that you need somebody to stay on, please feel free to contact me or contact John Bruschak or somebody and ask them for help, and we'd be more happy to help you.
Okay, thank you.
Because this is important, so we don't lose the funding.
Would approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, just one comment just to add to Norma's, Norma's item. Last year when we went to Washington, we weren't, we went with the, this was one of our packages, one of our items that we presented to some of the congressmen and the different committees, because this is an ongoing issue that we know in 2010, we may lose that federal funding for our maintenance and operation. So I just want to go on record saying that the city has been aggressively trying to, aggressively trying to persuade and educate others on the need for Brownsville not to be, you know, not to be, to change the, to change Congress's policy on this transportation bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
Okay, item 12.
Item 12, consideration and action to author... Item twelve, consideration in action to authorize an offer of just compensation for a thirteen point two seven acre parcel of property, more or less, located point thirty-four miles south of California Road at the northeast corner of South Illinois Avenue and Rosaca de la Guerra for the Park One Fifty program.
Mayor, members of the city commission, this is a thirteen point two seven acre tract owned by Mr. Henry Wolfe. I request that the commission give authorization to make an offer of just compensation for the fair market value. The fair market value by both an appraisal and a review appraisal is set at a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
We approve.
With the commission's permission, we will go to closing.
Approve and grant permission to proceed.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve and grant permission to proceed by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sinero, all in favor?
No.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, please.
Item thirteen, consideration in action to authorize a contract with the firm of Libowitz and Horton Airport Management Consultants Incorporated for the development of the Passenger Facility Charge Application Number Four.
Mayor, members of the commission, the city commission is asked to act to authorize Libowitz and Horton to assist myself and staff in preparing our Passenger Facility Charge Grant Application Number Four for the amount of about two million dollars. As you recall, the Passenger Facility Program is particularly important because we use that as the match for FAA funds for a wide variety of construction projects at the airport.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, and seconded by Commissioner Sinero, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Ben, thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Item number fourteen, consideration in action to renew an agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Valley Zoological Society to manage and operate the Gladys Porter Zoo for another three-year period.
Mayor, members of the city commission, this would, if passed, just be a continuation of the existing agreement that's been highly successful between the city and the Valley Zoological Society, where the city continued to own the property and the buildings there at the zoo, but the Zoological Society would manage it and run it for us. Recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Garza, and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item fifteen.
Yes.
Consideration in action to authorize the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Employee Benefit Pool to contract for stop-loss coverage for the City of Brownsville Medical Insurance.
Anybody here? Pete, is Pete around?
Can we go to the next agenda?
Okay, we'll get back to this one here.
Do we have HR?
Item sixteen, please.
It's, let's go to seventeen.
We can make a motion just to set aside.
Let's go to seventeen.
Seventeen.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Governor's Division of Emergency Management Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Seven Emergency Management Performance Grant awarded to the Brownsville Office of Emergency Management in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, Jeff Johnson, your Emergency Management Coordinator and Homeland Security Director, the Brownsville Office of Emergency Management has received this grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. This is the Emergency Management Performance Grant, or EMPG. This grant originates out of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, is designed to partially reimburse the City of Brownsville Emergency Management Program, and is used for expenditures related to the administration and support of that program. We've been receiving this grant for the last seven years. I'm proud to say that Brownsville is still a participant in this program. The guidelines are getting much more difficult as every year goes by, and we're still participating. And we're just simply asking that you accept this grant tonight.
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner, which one?
Garza.
Garza, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item, please, eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to authorize payment of sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and twelve cents to Verizon Select Services Incorporated for fiscal year two thousand and seven maintenance service contract.
Mayor, members of the city commission, good evening. Normally, this type of invoice is presented at the beginning of the fiscal year. We had instructed Verizon to hold off on this invoice as we were conducting a study of our telephone, in-house telephone system, and we were hoping to be able to get a new telephone system installed. However, the study was just concluded, and therefore, this invoice would have been prorated at the time if we would have purchased a new in-house phone system. We have not done that, so this is an invoice for maintenance agreement for this current fiscal year, and funds are in place through our budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sinero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Is Pete back here or no? Okay, let's go back to item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to authorize the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Employee Benefit Pool to contract for stop-loss coverage for the City of Brownsville Medical Insurance.
Pete Gonzalez?
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, the item for tonight is the award of a contract for the medical insurance for the City of Brownsville employees. I'm going to be talking to you a little bit of what TML IEBP stands for. This is the, TML IEBP is the pool that was established in May of nineteen seventy-nine under the TML Group Policy Risk Pool Trust. The pool operates under the authority of the Interlocal Cooperation Act and Chapter one seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code. The pool, through interlocal agreement services, is the instrument through which the cooperating units of a government obtain life, health, dental vision, long-term, and short-term disability. The pool is governed by an elected board of trustees comprised of one representative from each of the fifteen TML regions. All of the trustees are elected appointed officials of Texas cities and are elected to three-year rotating terms by the participating members of the pool. The Board of Trustees ultimately is responsible for the operation of the pool on behalf of the members, and for maintaining the excellent service. In nineteen eighty-nine, the pool became a partially self-funded program for health benefits to allow for more political benefit flexibility. The pool's health benefit plan is not insurance. The pool purchases both individual and aggregate stop losses, and that's what this item is about tonight, where we're going to award a contract to a stop-loss carrier for, so that we can buy that type of protection for individual and aggregate stop losses. All claims processing and administration is done utilizing pool staff, which allows for a high standard of service to each member. Effective April first of two thousand, the TML Group Benefits Risk Pool assigned and transferred all of its rights and obligations under contract to TML IEBP, and that's Intergovernmental Employee Benefits Pool, that's what IEB stands for. On September seventeenth, two thousand, TML IEBP Board met to transition all assets to TML IEBP, excuse me, the Board of Trustees places emphasis on services stability. The City of Brownsville, through an interlocal agreement, became a member of TML IEBP in October two thousand and three. Why did we join TML IEBP? They do not charge a commission for obtaining competitive reinsurance, that's the stop-loss policies for the city. They conduct training for chapter one seventy-two of the Local Government Code at no additional cost. They process all clean claims within an average of twenty-two days. If a claim is not clean, chapter one seventy-two allows them to extend or to delay paying the claim until forty-five days. If the claim is accident-related, that's TML, by the way, I put Y, IEBP investigates the claim, and if it discovers that a third party is responsible, they will file a claim against that third party. Generate savings to the city by making sure that all claims that exceed a specific or aggregate amount are reimbursed by the reimbursement carrier on a timely basis. They question, they have audits, large claims, and make sure that the city does not pay above the customary charges. Make sure that our medical insurance is in full compliance with all federal and state regulations, revises the city's benefit book document along with some policy and procedures to ensure compliance with stop-loss regulations and legislative mandated benefits. The claim turnaround is efficient, quality is excellent, provides free online enrollment for new employees while other private companies provide the service for a fee. It's also a Texas base, whereas other private companies are not. Will assist the city in the Medicare Part D retire education at no additional cost. They recently made the recommendation to change that words due to cost savings. It's always reviewing ways of assisting municipalities to manage their healthcare dollars. Is attentive to legislation and provides education to the membership on benefit areas that need review at no additional charge. Since it's not a private company, it has no ties with the reinsurance carriers, claims are processed on a timely basis, and as a result, we do not worry about meeting deadlines which could disqualify us from recovering refunds for claims exceeding the specific or aggregate amounts. Has already begun to, they have already begun to assist us in preparing the GASB statement forty-five information for actual review at no additional cost, conducts annual training for HIPAA, prepares monthly reserve list that is pulled from the reinsurance trigger diagnosed list, also provides disease management on behalf of employees, has proven to be successful in premium management and prompt refunds. And I know at one time, we did not have a benefit book, they came in and they updated and we were in compliance. This is what has happened to the health insurance fund since we joined TML. This particular schedule here has information dated from two thousand and four all the way through the period that ends August thirty-first of two thousand and seven. If you look at the very top, we have the receipts or contributions that we make to the plan, to the fund, and at the bottom, it shows you the receipts or contributions or over expenditures. And you can see the first year when we started with TML, we had a fund balance of a hundred and forty-eight thousand two twenty-eight in our self-funded insurance fund. That particular year, we gain, we increased our fund balance one million seven fifty-nine one seventy-seven, meaning that if you look at the top part of two thousand and four, you have nine million four ninety-two five thirty-five in revenues, and total expenses at that year was seven million seven thirty-three through fifty-six. As we go along to two thousand and five, the gain was one million four twenty-two eight hundred. We have seen the last year whereby expenditures are exceeding revenues, we are experiencing high claims. Right now, for instance, we have eight employees that are very high risk, and that's what's causing us, causing the plan to show more expenses than revenues. If you look at this schedule here, because we have been buying specific and aggregate stop losses, for the losses, we, of course, we, when you're self-funded, you want to make sure that you have protection for those cases that exceed a huge amount. In our case right now, we have a hundred and five deductible for specific, so any claim that exceeds a hundred and five thousand, the stop loss kicks in. In two thousand and four, for instance, we had refunds of six hundred and one thousand two seventy-one, yet our premiums for that year was four hundred and ninety-eight thousand seven eighty-eight. We had a gain of a hundred and two thousand four eighty-three. In two thousand and five, we had a gain, amazing, we had a huge gain there, of eight hundred and eighty-six thousand two fifty-three. That's the good thing about having self-funded, is that we keep the profits, we don't pay them to the, to insurance companies. In two thousand and six, that trend, again, that was a decline, two hundred and forty-three thousand eight ten. Right now, so far, in two thousand and seven, we have, through TML IEBP, we have refunds of a hundred and ninety thousand five seventy-five, and we have pending refunds. These are cases that have already been turned over to the stop-loss carrier, which is very, very likely we're going to get refunds, and this is through August of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine sixty-two. So as you can see there, there is, right now, we're not getting enough refunds, but we are paying quite a bit on the insurance premium, so we see a trend. But this is a trend that you see across, not only in Texas, but across the United States, where claims are high, and that's a trend that's going to continue. What I'd like to pass out to you is what we are proposing to you tonight. There were six, six companies that because of our huge claims that the city is experiencing right now, there was only one company that submitted bid, and that the only company that submitted a bid was Fidelity. I'm going to go over with you some of the, very, very briefly, of the recommendation that we have. We do have, we do show that we're going to have an increase in premiums, and that's because of our cases. We have some cases that are very, very, are going to be very high during the year, so we can see that there's an increase. By the way, like I said earlier, TML IEBP is, we belong to that organization, they go out and seek out bids for us, and then they come to us and they make a recommendation. And the recommendation that they're giving to us right now is that we go ahead and award the contract to Fidelity Insurance. The premium that we are seeing right now as far as an increase, we're looking at a premium increase of fourteen point five percent. What we're going to be doing, probably, we're going to be, year in the coming year, probably meet with the insurance committee, and possibly looking at, possibly changing some of our plan. We are possibly looking at, possibly looking at increasing the copay, increase the deductible, possibly increase in the premiums for, not only for single employees, but for dependents. Cities across the United States, cities across Texas are seeing higher increases in health insurance claims. Right now, there was an article in the Dallas paper that the increase right now in medical claims are around, running around nine percent. It depends, obviously, on the individual entity. We are, we do have, right now, eight claims that are going to be very, very high, we're experiencing that. So that's the reason why the premium is going up by that much, a fourteen point five eight percent. Again, the contract that we would ask you to award tonight is Fidelity, that's the name of the stop-loss carrier that we recommend you approve.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Can I have a motion approved based on the recommendation made by our finance director?
Motion to approve and award to Fidelity.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Longoria?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen, consideration in action to award a contract for life insurance coverage for the City of Brownsville.
Okay, that's already been done.
Move to the other one.
Okay.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, we belong also, we're under the umbrella of the Public Employee Benefits Alliance, and this is under TML IEBP. They also go out and seek bids for the city, and that's what they've done. This one on life insurance, this came out way ahead, better than what our medical insurance premiums came up. Right now, the current carrier for the, or provider for the city is Jefferson Pilot Insurance. Insurance Company. They're, they're charging two fifteen, uh, per employee. Uh, the, the bid that went out, the standard company came in with a dollar seventy-five, so there's a decrease of forty cents. There's a, as far as percentage decrease between the current carrier versus the, the standard company is eighteen point six percent. Um, the current, uh, life insurance benefit right now is ten thousand dollars. Uh, the recommended, uh, provider, which is the, the standard company, will also include accidental death and dismemberment and this, this is pays in the line of duty. So, if an employee, uh, the city, uh, happens to die in line of duty, uh, the beneficiary will receive the benefit of, uh, thirty thousand dollars. Uh, we recommend that, uh, you, uh, award the contract to the standards.
And, and let me ask you, um, ten thousand dollars is just enough to bury you. That's it. Uh, is there much price difference to raise that?
I'm going to have Susan Smith with T M L, I E B P, maybe she, she probably can answer that question. Susan, you want to come up?
I mean, if, if there's not, not much of a difference, maybe it'd be worthwhile considering.
We do the administrative work for the Public Employee Benefits Alliance and if the city wants us to get quotes for maybe ten thousand, which we have on the table tonight, and you want another fifteen or twenty thousand, you have to buy it up and we can present that proposal to you and we can say we're going to move to the standard, but you'd like us to look at three additional quotes for increasing that life benefit. And we'd need to get that quote from the standard.
Uh, I just don't see, um, I would like to see what the, if there's that much of a difference, you know, I like to take care of our employees if we can and if the cost is not that much, maybe we can consider for next year, but we'd like to get that information.
Okay, we'll, uh, bring you back three quotes and, um, the bigger benefit that I'm interested in right now is the A D and D for line of duty. That really is an additional benefit for police and fire and it really will make a difference for your employees and then we'll bring you back two other options that you can look at making a change before ten-one, um, if you make the recommendation, go the standard and I can tell them we're going to get new quotes tomorrow when I get back to the office.
I mean, ten thousand is not, I mean, it just gets you.
Most of the cities that we service do ten thousand dollars because they're at full co- for full expense for that and it really does provide for the burial and that's it.
That's it, right. Okay, um.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much, we have a motion by Commissioner.
To approve the standard and to look at the different quotes and we can look at that later, but increasing the.
Commissioner, Mrs. Nettles making the motion, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, city secretary.
Item nineteen, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Homeland Security Transportation Security Administration Cooperative Agreement awarded to the City of Brownsville Police Department in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand ninety-two dollars and fifty cents for a five-year project beginning October one, two thousand and seven and ending September thirtieth to twenty twelve.
Mayor, members of the city commission, uh, good evening once again. Uh, staff from the Brownsville Police Department and from the airport, uh, department put a proposal together for Homeland Security Transportation Security Administration. Basically, this is a grant award that reimburses not a hundred percent, but right around about between seventy-five to eighty percent for the expenses that the city incurs while posting police officers at the airport, uh, for boarding and, uh, and receiving flights.
Would you accept?
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, thank you. Motion carries. Item twenty.
Item twenty, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Texas Department of Transportation Selective Traffic Enforcement Program known as STEP, comprehensive grant awarded to the Brownsville Police Department in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents for fiscal year two thousand and eight.
Basically self, self-explanatory, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, grant award from TexDOT for, uh, traffic enforcement for, for the police department and, and that amount.
Do you accept, Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Nettles, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, consideration in action to authorize and execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Brownsville, Texas, the Cameron County Tax Assessor's Office, Cameron County District Attorney's Office, the City of McAllen, Texas, City of Farr, Texas, City of Edinburgh, Texas regarding a mutual aid burglary and theft of motor vehicle law enforcement task force.
Back in July, the city commissioner approved the grant award from the Automobile and Burglary Theft Prevention Authority in, in the amount of a million dollars and change. Uh, basically this is just the interlocal agreements that, as part of that paperwork that's required for us to receive those grant awards for fiscal year two thousand and eight.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mrs. Nettles, second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Item twenty-two.
Item twenty-two.
Consideration in action to award a contract for airport security system improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Okay.
Good evening.
Mr. Walker.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of Aviation Director Larry Brown, purchasing and contracting services departments solicited formal sealed proposals for the aforementioned project. It is intent of the city to seek a qualified vendor to provide security system improvements for and all related hardware and software, including name of manufacturer, trade name and so forth, for the airport grounds. Project milestones were accomplished as follows. Legal advertisement to Brownsville Herald twice, July the eighth and July twenty-second. Thirteen firms and contractors were requested and received proposal packages. Three acknowledgements were received. Pre-proposal meeting was conducted on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth. Eleven firms were represented at the pre-proposal. Requests for clarifications and/or changes were submitted by contractors during the pre-proposal meeting and the process. Requested changes were to request information on the scope of services and technical drawings. Project consultant Teresa Smith, who I may say is here in the audience, of Ross and of Rosini, concurred with the requested changes. Three addendums were released to the participating contractors. Sealed proposals were received for the subject project on August fifteenth, oh seven. A review committee was formed consisting of aviation department, M I S department and pro- and the project consulting firm. Three proposals were received and distributed. One meeting was conducted August seventeenth to discuss the evaluation process and procedures to independently score the proposals. After the evaluation committee members submitted their evaluation forms, the project consultant Teresa Smith tabulated the scores. Evaluation score sheet is attached in your packet. As a result of this process, one firm was ranked the highest. Contract negotiations were initiated with the highest-ranked firm, Matrix Systems, Inc. As a result of the, of the negotiation process, the recommended contractor and the aviation department have reached a satisfactory working agreement, both in terms of the available budget for the project as well as services to be rendered. Staff recommends the following. Based on successful negotiations with the proposed firm, staff recommends the award of a contract for airport security system improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to Matrix Systems of Dayton, Ohio, in the amount of ninety-two thousand six hundred and fifty-eight, uh, dollars for base bid amount and bid alternate number one. Contract should commence so subsequent to award by the city commission. Should you have any specific technical questions, the consultant firm is here to answer those.
Why did, uh, Matrix not request a RFP package?
I don't, I don't have an answer for you, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, that, they did answer, uh, they've, they're on the list of, uh, requested plan holders, uh, this is, this is the plan holders list, the latest one as of, uh, right before we prepared this packet, so these are the list of the plan holders on this list. They did, they did get a RFP.
Okay, so they did, it just shows here they did not, okay?
Well, I made, I made a mistake, but it, but it's in the packet, sir.
Yeah, so I, I kind of wonder how they could do it without the RFP packet, you know?
Second.
Okay, on top of my game. Okay, uh, do we have another, uh, any questions? You all want to say something? Um, no? Okay, staff recommendation?
We just might note to you that this is an FAA-funded project, it's funded entirely by FAA and PFC funds, not city general funds.
Thanks, uh, appreciate it. Can we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner, I don't know, motion by Commissioner Mrs. Nettles, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-three, consideration in action to award a term contract for print material services for the Brownsville Public Library System.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of Public Information Service Department Director Jerry Hedgescock, purchasing and contract services department solicited formal sealed proposals for the aforementioned project. It is the intent of the city to seek a wholesale distribution firm to provide the following, but not limited to, services. Furnish of print materials, acquisition responsibility, original cataloging, copy cataloging, item conversion, copy-specific information to appropriate, uh, bibli- bibliographic records, well, it's a tough one. Uh, processing and delivery of the materials, including hardcover books, board books, library-bound books, mass media paperback and trade paperbacks. Project milestones were accomplished as follows. Illegal advertisement occurred in the Brownsville Herald, May twenty-seventh. Three firms on the vendor list were mailed requests for proposals. Three acknowledgements were received. Pre-proposal meeting was conducted on the nineteenth of July at eleven o'clock. One firm was represented. Sealed proposals were received by, for the subject project on August first and an evaluation committee was formed consisting of public library department staff. Three proposals were received and distributed to the evaluation committee for review. One meeting was conducted August third to discuss the evaluation process and procedures to score the proposals. After the evaluation committee members submitted their evaluation forms via the internet, the purchasing and contract services department tabulated the scores. As a result of this process, one of the firms was ranked the highest. Contract negotiations were initiated with the highest-ranked firm of Baker and Taylor. As a result of the, this process, the recommended vendor and the public information services department have reached a satisfactory working agreement, both in terms of the budget and as well as services to be provided. The recommendation to staff is as follows. Based on a successful negotiation with the proposed highest-ranked firm, staff recommends the award of term contract for print material services for the Brownsville Public Library System to Baker and Taylor of Charlotte, North Carolina, at the stipulated catalog discounts. Targeted commencement date for the contract is October first, term of the contract is three years. The city reserves the option to extend the life of the contract for two additional twelve month periods. Funding is under general fund.
Okay, any questions? Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, by Commissioner Camarillo and second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for the construction of one thirty-foot tall, single steel pole, double-faced sign to be erected at the Brownsville Public Library System Central Branch Building.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of Public Information Services Department Director Jerry Hedgescock, the department solicited formal sealed bids for the aforementioned project. It is intent of the city to seek a qualified contractor to construct a thirty-foot-high steel single pole, double-faced sign with full-color LED message center at the Brownsville Public Library System Central Branch located at twenty-six hundred Central Boulevard. The project also includes an additive alternative option to include a larger color LED center. Project milestones are as follows. Advertisement to Brownsville Herald, July the eighth, four companies on the city's vendor list were mailed an invitation to submit bids, three acknowledgements were received. Pre-bid meeting was on August the twenty-ninth at the Contract and Services Department. One vendor was represented at the pre-bid, um, meeting. Public Information Service Department staff approved the requested changes. Sealed formal bids were opened for the subject project on September seventh. Total of three bids were received and tabulated. The attached bid tabulation is an analysis of the bids received, the recommendation of staff. The consideration in action to award a contract for construction of one thirty-foot-high, single steel pole, double-faced sign with full-color LED message centers, one for each side of the sign, to be erected at the Brownsville Public Library System Central Branch to Highway Neon Sign Company of Farr, Texas, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Funding is in place.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Mrs. Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, twenty-five, please.
Item twenty-five, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of grounds maintenance equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of Parks and Recreation Director Skip Keller, the purchasing and contracting department has solicited a buyboard proposal for this subject procurement under chapter seven ninety-one, oh twenty-five, interlocal cooperation. With the Texas government code, the bidding requirement has been satisfied by the state of Texas Local Government Purchasing Cooperative, or buyboard. Staff from the Parks and Recreation Department has worked with Barbie New House Implement Company, John Deere Company, to choose the correct grounds maintenance equipment based on the different job applications. Staff recommends the following for your consideration. Uh, consideration in action to award a contract for purchase and delivery of two new diesel-powered thirty-two horsepower, seventy-two-inch Z-Track iron deck mower and two diesel-powered thirty-two horsepower sixty-inch iron deck mowers for the Parks and Recreation Department to Barbie New House Implement Company, John, a John Deere Company of West Laco, Texas, in the amount of forty-nine thousand six fifteen seventy-two. Funding is in place.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Longoria, second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-six, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one vehicle for the administration division of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, at the request of Parks and Recreation Services Director Skip Keller, the purchasing and contract services department has developed this agenda item to acquire an additional vehicle to be used by the, by the division of the Parks and Recreation Department. I might add to, to shorten the presentation, this is a piggyback purchase that we awarded through Tippecoee Chevrolet last May. Uh, the recommendation is to award a contracts of one new oh-eight Chevrolet Trailblazer to Tippecoee Chevrolet in the amount of nineteen thousand eight seventy-eight forty-eight. I'll move.
We have a motion, we have two motions. We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner Garza, this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item twenty-seven, consideration in action to award a term contract for traffic engineering services for the Brownsville Traffic Department.
Honorable mayor, members of the, of the city commission, at the request of Traffic Director Robert Espada, the purchasing and contract services department solicited statements of qualifications for the aforementioned project. It is the intent of the city to seek traffic engineering firms to perform engineering, surveying, improvement services and preparation of actual working drawings for the construction of traffic signals for the following traffic intersections. Uh, the, 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 the first two in your packet are, are priced out, Central Boulevard and Medialuna, oh, Highway seventy-seven and Price Road at Slos. Uh, and then there are eight other, uh, intersections. Project milestones were accomplished as follows. Legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald one time on May the sixth and was posted to the city's website on May seventh. Three traffic engineering firms requested and received S O Q packages. Three acknowledgements were subsequently received. Statements of qualifications were received from three firms for the RFP for the qualifications of traffic engineering and surveying services on May thirtieth. Copies of all qualification statements were received and submitted to the traffic department for review. On July twentieth, a review committee submitted their evaluation criteria score via internet to determine the highest-ranked firm. The purchasing and contract services department tabulated the scores, the evaluation criteria score sheet is attached for your review. On August third, the new, the review committee met for interview and presentation with the highest-ranked traffic engineering firm, Aldana Engineering and Traffic, uh, immediately following, the interview meeting, the review committee requested a preliminary proposal for traffic engineering and surveying services based upon a proposed schedule of values on a fixed-fee base on the engineer's opinion of probable cost for preparation of actual working drawings for the improvement and construction of traffic signals listed previously in your packet. August tenth, the traffic department received a proposal from Aldana Engineering. The proposed percentages account for five phases of construction, namely study and report phase, preliminary engineering services. preliminary engineering services, design, bidding, and construction phases for a fixed-rate fee. Traffic Department staff reviewed the proposals submitted by Aldana Engineering and Traffic Design and agreed to accept the fa- the, the working agreement, both in terms of the available budget for each project budget, as well as the services to be rendered, calculated on a percentage fixed fee basis, inclusive of all required traffic engineering and surveying services for the completion of preliminary design, final design, and improvement construction services for each traffic project. September the eleventh, the Purchasing and Contract Services Department received a memorandum from Robert Espata, Traffic Director, recommending the acceptance of this proposal. Staff's recommendation, based on successful negotiations with the proposed firm, staff recommends the award of term contract for traffic engineering improvement services for the Brownsville Traffic Department to Aldana Engineering and Traffic Design of Weslaco, Texas, for a fixed rate of sixteen point three percent of awarded improvement construction contract amounts. The recommended firm will also serve in the capacity of consulting traffic engineer and surveyor based upon additional miscellaneous projects as scheduled by the Traffic Department. Fees will be negotiated on a per-project, uh, basis. This contract, should you approve it, shall commence upon award by the City Commission and shall be expired September thirtieth, oh-eight. The city reserves the, the option to extend the life of the contract for two additional years. Funding for this project is in place.
What is the total going to be, the total cost going to be?
Sixteen percent.
No, dollars amount, dollars.
Sixteen point three percent, but, but for the first two, uh, projects, it is.
The fifty-six thousand for?
For the first two projects, uh, based on construction costs, it's fifty-six thousand seven sixty-four twenty-four.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, sir, that's for the first two projects.
Okay, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Longoria.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, real quick, Commissioner Trionne wanted me to state for the record that he was out of town today on, uh, legal business.
That's fine. Uh, uh.
He's excused.
Wait, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They can stay. Uh, Ivan, are you the interim, uh, purchasing agent?
No.
No?
Manager.
Okay, I just wondered, okay? You did a good job. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, City of Staff.